Looks like it's two o'clock to me and so I'm gonna call this board meeting to order. Today is March ninth, two thousand twenty-three. It's two o'clock PM. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. And we are in the community room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building located at two twenty-five College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider and act on the posted agenda. We do have a quorum and I appreciate everybody being here. Appreciate all the people who are here that are not on the board. If we can, I would ask Mr. Baker to give us our invocation.
Yes, sir. Happy to do that. Please bow with me. Laura, we're thankful to you for another day, another month here at Weatherford College. First, I'd like to pray for the safety of our students this next week, help them to make good decisions and to get a good rest and come back refreshed and ready to finish the semester. Same with our faculty and staff. We thank you for what you've done for our college and we thank you for our board. Please be with them as they deliberate. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Let Stan lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Worley, do we have anyone who wants to be on public comment today?
No, sir.
Thank you. How are you doing today? Good. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, President's Report. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations: Congratulations to the Weatherford College Board of Trustees for their collective support of new academic programs. In addition to all the new workforce and associate arts programs, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board recently approved Weatherford College's fourth Bachelor's Degree Program, a Bachelor's Degree in Education. Thanks to the W.C. Board, we will begin preparing teachers this August. Congratulations to W.C. alumnus Shawn Martin on recently winning a Grammy Award. Thirty-six former Coyotes have now won Grammy Awards or have performed on Grammy-winning recordings. The Weatherford College Foundation Board of Directors recently renamed W.C.'s Permanent Scholarship Endowment Program in honor of the late Bob Glenn. The newly renamed Bob Glenn Endowment Program will continue to give donors the opportunity to leave a legacy by funding student scholarships in perpetuity. The Intercollegiate Tennis Association recently ranked Weatherford College Women's Tennis number fifteen in the nation. Last year, the Coyote tennis team advanced to the national tournament and finished eighth in the nation. Recognition is in order for the W.C. Campus Police Department, three members of our Food Service Department, and several Student Life employees who served our students during the February ice storm. These dedicated employees took great care of our students and modeled our culture of caring during a challenging time. Thank you to all involved. Employee notices: DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Teresa Hutchison from the Office of the President has resigned effective two fifteen twenty-three. Chelsea Cochran from Creative Services has resigned effective three three twenty-three. And Lisa D'Amico, an instructor in Humanities, has resigned effective five thirteen twenty-three. We thank Teresa, Chelsea, and Lisa for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Any questions or comments about the report? If not, we'll move to the Consent Agenda Number Four on the agenda today. And we're looking at A through G. There was a lot in that report. So if there are any questions or comments, we can address those now.
I had one question. On the charging station, is there any contingency like for funding on that being completed, like a date that has to be finished?
Dan May can work with you better than I on that, but there has been some timing concerns back and forth with that grant. It's basically the state getting that worked out. I don't think there'll be a problem long term.
The last information I had is that after several passes back and forth, we finally met in the middle and have located equipment that can be installed and meet their deadlines.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That, you know, when we were looking over that particular document, there is a lot in that. And I appreciate that question in the comment. Anything else? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and financial reports?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. That's approved. Moving to Agenda Item Number Five, Consideration Possible Action Adoption, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four tuition and fees. Dr. Kentrell.
Last month, we brought to you all our recommendation on our tuition and fees. And basically, the tuition rate increases were seven percent increase in district, tuition out of district. Students would increase by seventeen dollars or nine percent. Tuition for out of district W.C., W.C., eight percent. And tuition for ECG students would increase by fifteen dollars or nine percent. Out of state would be increased by nine percent. We would be adding a new technology fee of ten dollars per hour. Meal plans are going up by fifty. Testing fee would increase, new application fee of five dollars, a new transcript fee of five dollars, and a new replacement additional parking permit. Lab fees were added for certain courses that we had not had in the past. And assessment fees would go from three hundred and sixty to four hundred. Nearly everything we've got here has been, except for the tuition and technology fee, have been where we were charged an increased rate on something. So we're having to up our rates to pay for those in return. And a hundred and twenty-five ultrasound registry fee is being added to courses. I also provided to you this time was some comparisons, the community colleges, public universities, and private universities in Texas, to give you some comparatives to those. The chart that I passed on to you all compared us to local universities and what are universities that a lot of our students go to. And I think the comparison turned out very well. Weatherford, it was for fifteen hours, it would be three thousand six hundred and seventy dollars a year compared to Tarleton State, ten thousand two ninety-four, San Houston State, eleven thousand, Texas State, eleven thousand eight sixty, UNT, eleven thousand nine ninety-four, UTA, twelve thousand two oh eight, TTU, Texas Tech, eleven thousand eight five two, Texas A&amp;M, eleven thousand six hundred and forty-two, Midwestern State, ten thousand four hundred and five. I looked at a couple of private colleges. Abilene Christian, which many of our, not several of our students go to, forty thousand four seventy, and TCU would be fifty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. So three thousand sixty, seventy dollars is quite a buy, I would say, for the buck. So do you have any specific questions that you'd like to ask me right now? I do have other information and will be glad to provide that.
I appreciate the comparison. We talked about that last board meeting and I think it helps the community understand what Weatherford College is offering and what, you know, the efficiency we're trying to operate under. So thank you very much. I think it's a great comparison.
Thank you.
Well, I agree about that. When you compare and you go into the independent universities and you can get such a big jump, you can save so much money by going to Weatherford College or a community college, and it's just amazing. And so I really appreciate that.
With us offering four Bachelor's Degrees programs at this point in time, it's quite a savings.
I think that's great. Any comments or questions by anyone else? Dr. Farmer, anything from you?
I would just add that affordability and accessibility is very important and we are very proud to offer such a high-quality education at such an affordable price. And our faculty and staff are the ones that really make that possible. And so thank you to all of them for all of their hard work. Anyone else?
One other point, Mac. You know, it's interesting, in the paper, all papers, I won't pick on one, but the price of getting an education for a teacher has really become spotlighted and the shortage of teachers that we have. And the fact that we now have a four-year Bachelor's Degree for Education with a cost like this, I think is wonderful for the community. I mean, hopefully, we'll encourage more people to go into that field because of its reasonableness and the cost, and also encourage them because it's a great profession to go into, so.
Absolutely.
And I said Jack Harvey the other day. So many of those teachers, I can't remember what the percentage was, but so many of them were Weatherford College graduates. It was really, so we're, I think we're very fortunate. I appreciate everything that this board is doing and all the other components in this organization. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move to the...
Recommendation?
Yeah. Is there a motion to adopt the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four tuition and fees as presented?
I make that motion?
Is there a second, please?
My second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you very much. That's approved. Moving to Agenda Item Number Six, Consideration Possible Action Resolutions Authorizing Method of Procurement on Construction, Delegation of Authority, Delegates, Selection of Committee on Carter Property Site Development Project. Dr. Kentrell again. Thank you.
As always, when we go into construction of any site, we have to go in and ask for the procurement method that we want to use. And today, we would recommend bidding, an outright bid on these procurement methods for the authority to go in and construct, as well as we will have to destroy there, what's there, and build back to own the Carter property for our development project for the future. So we would recommend basically that we would use the bid, state bidding law.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Dr. Farmer?
Yes, sir.
All right. The recommendation and the motion would be that the Board of Trustees approve competitive sealed proposals as the method of procurement that provides the best value in delegation of authority and selection of committee to Dr. Todd Allen Farmer, President of Weatherford College, for the Carter Property Site Development Project as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. That's approved. Thank you. Thank you. Moving to Agenda Item Eight, Consideration Possible Action Resolutions Authorizing Method of Procurement on Construction, Delegation of Authority, and Delegates, Selection of Committee on Replacement of One Irrigation Well at Main Campus. Dr. Kentrell.
We'll be bringing online, I think we missed approval before number seven, back up, but we can do that.
Go ahead. We'll jump back up.
But we will be adding, well, it's actually a replacement because we did lose one of our wells, but this will be, it will increase our number of wells to four for irrigation purposes on campus.
Sorry to jump ship on you like that.
And we are recommending the same for that, that they would be sealed bids.
And we'll go back to number seven in just a moment. Is there a motion to approve the method of procurement, construction, delegation of authority, and delegates selection of committee on electrical vehicle charging site development as proposed?
That's a move.
Is there a second? Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. So now we'll go back and go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Once again, Dr. Kentrell.
Number seven is the same on the charging stations, and we are recommending on that that we would go in and use competitive seal bids also.
Yes.
That's the one we just voted on.
I know.
So we gotta do eight now.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the charging stations? Thank you. Does our insurance cover all liabilities associated with installation and operation of those charging stations?
Well, anything general, we have general liability unless we are found at fault on something or negligent in a certain manner, would be our fault only. So the insurance would cover that.
So if someone plugs their car in and it blows up and explodes and burns down?
We have to be diligent in maintenance on those stations and doing everything that would be required. Dan, you're the attorney. I'll let you...
Yeah, the liability insurance would cover that, you know, unless we started the fire. So I think that we, that we're safe on that. And the individuals that do the construction and put it together also bring their own insurance to handle the liabilities in the construction area.
Okay. Good enough. I'll hold you to it.
And so I think we need to have a vote on number eight, Consideration Possible Action Resolutions Concerning the Irrigation Well. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for your help on correcting me. Is there a motion to that effect?
I make the motion.
Second on that effect?
My second.
Thank you, ma'am. Everyone in favor, raise your right hand. That's approved. Thank you very much. Apologize for the confusion. So now we'll move to Agenda Item Number Nine, President Farmer Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As usual, you have been provided with a written report for Academic and Student Services Update. A couple of things that I want to highlight, one, we've already alluded to a couple of times, and there's more detailed information about our new Bachelor's Degree in Education. And the second thing that I would like to highlight is that we have now secured an agreement for Weatherford College's very first four-plus-one articulation agreement, and we have several more of those in the works, which will allow our students to earn both a Bachelor's and a Master's Degree in a total of five years. And so we're very excited about the opportunities that that will present to our students. Agenda Item Nine B, we have a verbal report from our Public Relations Team led by Mr. Baker, and we have Katie Edwards and Crystal Worley here. I have to tell you that I challenge this group, particularly as it related to Instagram, and they have some very exciting information to share with you about Instagram, and I look forward to this presentation. They're doing a great job and we're really proud of your work.
President Farmer, thank you, Board of Trustees. It's an honor and a privilege to give you an update this afternoon on our PR efforts at Weatherford College. You know, there were so many incredible things happening at our institution, and every single person connected with this college can contribute to positive public relations. It starts with our Board of Trustees. You're the ambassadors in the community for us. And then from the administration, faculty, staff, students, foundation board, even alumni, they all contribute to positive public relations. However, we do have some professionals who direct our overall PR strategies, and I'd like to introduce that team to you. This is our Creative Services Team. Katie Edwards will speak to you in just a moment. She's our Executive Director of Creative Services. You know Crystal Worley, she's our Director of Public Relations. And the newest member of our Creative Services Team is Leslie Richardson, she's our graphic designer. And then we have additional team members that help tremendously in this area. J.C. Edwards, who you know, wears so many hats. She is our Senior Advancement Specialist. And Dave Cowley, the General Manager of our new radio station. We'll be talking about radio here in just a minute. You know, PR for an institution like ours is a challenge. Many organizations have a focus, target audience, or customer base, but for us, we have a very broad audience that we're trying to reach. If you think about it, we're trying to reach prospective students, educational stakeholders, community members, taxpayers, donors, prospective donors, and alumni. So we're trying to reach a very vast audience that ranges from high school and junior high students all the way up to senior citizens. And that requires us to use a variety of methods of media because what might reach you or me probably won't reach a high school student and vice versa. Katie Edwards and Crystal Worley will give you an overview of some of those efforts. Katie will start by talking about our public website, wc.edu, as well as our prank publications, video packages. And then Crystal will talk about our social media efforts, media releases, and other efforts. And then I'll close with some other PR projects and then answer any questions that you might have. Okay?
Good afternoon. We did a website redesign in two thousand twenty-one, working with a vendor who did a really good job helping us understand how our site serves our different audiences. We organized the new site so that most of it's easy to navigate for prospective students and their parents, giving a stylish look that really showed off our campuses and programs. It was understood that we could train our current students, faculty, and staff to go to pages that would be full of information and links for their specific needs. I'd like to share some interesting data from Google Analytics about wc.edu for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-two. These first two numbers deal with the search engine results. We had three point six million impressions, which tells us how many times any WC webpage address appeared in a search result. We had a hundred and seventy thousand clicks. Those clicks are how many times someone clicked on one of those webpage addresses in the search results. We had one point seven million page views, over six hundred and sixty thousand sessions, meaning that most people who came to our site went to at least two or three pages. Creative Services also oversees the visuals for our social media graphics, promotional giveaways, signage, and print publications. Beyond the Presidential Annual Work Report and Hilltop Magazine, which is currently mailed out three times a year to around seven thousand alumni, donors, and community members, we also support general recruitment and freshman orientation, fine arts events, all WC athletic teams including maintaining their website, foundation and alumni events like Taste of Harper County and Chase Race, Student Life Events. We support academic programs through items for their recruitment, as well as departmental events open to the public like the Philoxi Conference and interdisciplinary conference. We support workforce programs and grant programs. We also coordinate with the vendor to create video packages that showcase our institution. For example, we have a new video showing the economic impact Weatherford College has had on the area of the Yasi. These videos are a dynamic and polished way to share our stories and are posted on the college website, social media, and more. Crystal Worley is now going to give you information on the WC social media presence. Good afternoon. Weatherford College has dozens of social media profiles across various platforms, but for data tracking, these listed up here on the slide are the core seven that I keep my eye on. Using the social media management tool called Sprout Social, I can plan our content calendar, keep track of how our posts perform, and even see how W.C. compares against other area colleges. For the two thousand twenty-two calendar year, posts on these seven profiles were seen more than six million times. That's the number of impressions. They were interacted with more than four hundred thousand times. That's engagements. Engagement can be a like, a share, a comment, a link click, really any interaction that's taken with that post. The engagement rate is the most important key performance indicator on social media. And our profiles last year had an average engagement rate of six point seven percent, well above what is considered a good range. We have more than thirty-seven hundred posts during two thousand twenty-two, and I want to show you a few of our most popular ones. This Facebook post from the National Championship Rodeo Reception had the highest number of impressions last year with more than forty-six thousand views and an outstanding twenty-four point four-two percent engagement rate. And this post from the Presidential Annual Luncheon had the highest engagement rate of any post from two thousand twenty-two, at thirty-seven percent. As you can see, the number of impressions are much lower than the first, but this is actually around the normal impression rate that our Facebook posts receive. But the percentage of people interacting with it was incredibly high, which led to an overall high engagement rate. In addition to keeping track of data for our profiles, I also track how we stack up against the community college districts that border Weatherford College. For the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two academic year, our W.C. social media profiles outperformed all of them with one exception, Tarrant County College beat us on Instagram. So my goal for this academic year is to have an annual engagement rate higher than TCC, and I am well on my way to achieving that. For the entire two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two academic year, we received twenty-three thousand engagements on this profile. But for this academic year so far, this top line is us, we are already at thirty-two thousand engagements. And that's just from August first through the end of February. TCC is the third line, down at twenty-seven thousand, and surprisingly, right now, I'm actually a little ahead of Dallas County College. Also in two thousand twenty-two, I sent two hundred and thirty-two press releases to local media, including news, features, and sports stories. Those articles are regularly published in newspapers in our service area, and I also use them to create content for social media. Additionally, as the Director of Public Relations, I build and maintain relationships with area business leaders and nonprofit organizations and look for ways W.C. can help to build a stronger community.
Thank you, Crystal. I don't know about y'all, but I'm kind of competitive. So I love it when we're beating Dallas College, Tarrant College. That's new to my ears. So thank you, guys. You're doing a great job. I'm going to wrap up with a couple of more PR projects. Recently, we added the Coyote Connection email newsletter, it's a monthly newsletter that goes to about three thousand alumni, friends, and community members. That's over there. And J.C. Edwards spends her time on that. We're working on dramatically expanding that distribution list. So for anyone in the room or for anyone online, if you're not receiving the Coyote Connection email blast, or if you're not receiving the Hilltop newsletter, please see J.C. after the meeting or anytime, and we'd love to get you added on the list. And finally, the most recent tool in our PR toolbox is the radio station, the Coyote. We took a radio station that had built up an audience for twenty years, and now we're able to weave in Weatherford College information into the station's ever-expanding programming. Just a couple of examples, our Education Department Chair Shannon Stoker was on the morning show Tuesday morning talking about our new Bachelor's Degree that President Farmer talked about. Dr. Ron Epps was interviewed live on the air last week about our Beth Ted program. And Dr. Hayon Song's piano concert was aired live in its entirety. And just about all of our athletics coaches have been featured on the Coyote Coach's Corner. So that's just the tip of the iceberg, and those opportunities will be even larger as the station grows. We didn't have time to touch on all paid advertising that we do, newspapers, magazines, social media, outdoor advertising, billboards, ads at local high school stadiums, et cetera, but we want to be respectful of our time, and we'll stop there for now. So trustees, if you have any questions?
It's super impressive what y'all are doing. I love that you're using Sprout Social. We use that, and I just think it's probably one of the, they dig down the best. So I really was glad to see that, but I'm really impressed.
The analytics are correct?
Yeah.
You could really drill down.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Just one positive comment. The group of people on this campus that give me the warmest welcome when I come here is the... the landscaping maintenance group. That is, that is the nicest group of people. I mean, they are helpful, they are energetic, they are friendly. It's just, it's, they give you a good feeling when you drive up here.
Well, like I said, so many people contribute to positive public relations, and they are right there.
They are right there.
That's right. Thank you.
Anything else, any other questions or comments?
There's a question about, or I have a question about. So we have more hits than Dallas, some of these other schools. What, what makes us think that's good? I mean, in other words, they may be too low, and beating them is not really what we want to do. How do we measure that? How do we know, how do we know that's really good? Is there any kind of production parameter that we have that relates positively, correlates positively with hits?
I would say the qualitative measurement there would be hits versus engagements. So your hits or your impressions are just people seeing your content. Engagements, like Crystal said, are when people engage with that content, they're sharing it, which they're letting all of their contacts know about it. And so it, the message spreads like wildfire in that scenario. You've heard about going viral. That's how you go viral, when you have those engagements. So to us, that's a, that's a measurement of success when you have engagement versus just impressions.
Thank you.
Anything else, any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you all very much.
Let you get seated, and then we'll ask you to, we'll move to number 10 on the agenda announcements, Mr. Baker.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It'll be a busy time after spring break. Of course, next week is spring break, March 13th through the 17th, and then we have multiple baseball and softball double headers here on campus. We also have our monthly ex-students meeting, which this next month will be on the third Monday of the month because of spring break. You're always invited to that. The interdisciplinary academic conference, March 23rd to 24th. I think I saw Mr. Q here. He's heading this up this year, and he can answer any questions after the meeting about that. A lot of work goes into that conference. We have our songwriter showcase, which will be March the 23rd in the ALCEC. Always interesting to hear what the students come up with there. I can't go on without mentioning our Coyote basketball team, who won their opening round playoff game, upsetting Clarendon College yesterday. They play Ranger College tomorrow at 1:00, and we're wishing for the best there out in Lubbock. And then it's all about the music. I think I saw Dwayne Duratt around here earlier, April the 13th, at the ALCEC Fine Arts Center. And Mr. Smith, if you don't mind me mentioning, since I am doing announcements, I'd like to mention real quickly that our alumni awards committee met earlier this week, and they decided on our alumni award winners. And I'd like to point out that Mr. John Forrest Jr. is our alumnus of the year for 2023.
I'll also say I'm also a member of the PR.
Yes, you are.
I always tell everybody you're a member of the college.
That helped. I'm sure that helped the nomination. Distinguished alumni award winners include David G. Rogers, who's a successful banker out in West Texas, and president of the Sol Ross State University Foundation, and Harvey Ketchins, who we believe is the only former Coyote to play in the NBA. And so we'll honor those three on April the 14th, right in this room at our alumni awards luncheon. Hope you're all there.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions or comments about those announcements? Okay, so we'll move to the closed session. The closed sessions will cover 11 ABC as posted, so we will now adjourn. All right, it's now 10 minutes after four, and we've been in executive session, and I'm going to call us back into public session, and we are in order, and we will move to the next item on the agenda, which would be agenda item number 12, consideration possible action, real property. And so at this point, we want to talk about the stable on the Carter property. Is there anything else besides that at this point we want to talk about? I'm talking about presentations to be made. All right. Okay. And we have Mr. Bill Warren here, and so Mr. Warren, I'd like to ask you to come back to the podium, if you can, and refresh us with what we have been discussing in many, many different ways within the college about how to, to deal with that stable that has been found and the historical marker that, that's been contemplated and discussed in other public sessions by the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the opportunity to speak on the stable. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation that I gave earlier on this, this was a surprise to me when it came to my attention quite some time ago, and in dealing with the history of it, how much that stable has not only meant Parker County because of its unusual nature, but all of the people who were a large part of this city that had a hand in the ownership of that property along the way. What I am seeking for the stable is, is a registered, what is called a registered Texas historical marker. There are two types of Texas historical markers. One is a subject marker, and one is a registered Texas landmark. The registered Texas landmark does provide a little bit of protection in that should the, there be contemplation on destruction of the building, that the Texas Historical Commission could ask for a 60-day with a 30-day extension, a total of 90-day hold on anything that happens to the property. However, there is no financial commitment by the college on any sort of restoration or maintenance of the building, similar to what's, what's, where the building stands right now. And so I'm just asking today, after your due consideration, that Dr. Farmer be authorized as representative of the college to have the building, have the marker for the building, for the stable, as a registered Texas historical landmark. And I do have, it may be more dramatic than I need to be, but I, in very particular, I'm pretty adamant about historic preservation, but I did want to note that Cyrus the Great was slain in 530 B.C., and he was buried in a great tomb on the southern plains of Persia. 200 years later, another grand actor comes up, Alexander the Great, and he sweeps, sweeps through Asia Minor, and he captures and conquers the kingdom of Persia. His men wanted to destroy the tomb, and they wanted to erase the history because he was Greek, and he's, were Arabs or Persians. And Alexander said, what, what does it say on the side of that building? And these were the words that were delivered to him. "O man, whosoever you are and from whence you come, for I know that you will come. I am Cyrus, son of Khavisa, founder of the empire of the Persians and king of the east. Do not grudge me this spot on earth which covers my body." When Alexander recognized the grand eloquence of the words that Cyrus the Great had put on his tomb, and doubtless of his own position in the grand of, of history, he forbade his men to touch it. 2,500 years later, that tomb still sits on the southern plains of Persia. Now, I realize it is the oldest base, freebase standing building in the world, by the way, now. I realize we're a democracy, not a monarchy, but I would ask today that you all collectively be the Alexander of your day and preserve the structure that is unique in Texas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Chadwick, is there anything you would like to say in public about your, the work you've done concerning the stable?
Sure. Um, I, you know, do not, but if there's any, like, questions on you.
Okay. All right. All right. Are there any questions by the board members for Mr. Warren or Mr. Chadwick at this point? All right. And so you have, Mr. Warren, you have provided us with a Texas Historical Commission application. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And is this application, is it complete and ready to be sent in and applied for, is there anything we need to do besides just a motion at this time to authorize the college, the person who's going to sign the commission?
On the application, there are two attachments, and attachment A is the one that has the authorization for registered Texas historical landmark designation. There is an attachment B that is actually for my part, for the, the fee that goes with that, and once I do get approval one way or another, then I can submit that to the Parker County Historical Commission, and they have so, they can add comments to the application itself, and then they are the ones that need to forward that to the Texas Historical Commission.
And the person that we want to designate to sign that would be Dr. Farmer. Is that correct?
If that is the, if that is the board's wish, is to be the designee, yes, I, I think he would be the logical person for that signature.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the application to designate that we've discussed here and apply for a registered Texas landmark for the, the stable out on the Carter property? Is there such a motion?
Settle move.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and that's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else with that, Mr. Curly, that you know? All right. So we'll now move to agenda item number 12. Is there any action needed beyond the Carter property stalls?
No.
Okay. We'll move to agenda item number 13, consideration possible action, appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer. And what we're talking about there is the annual evaluation and employment contract of the college president. I want to say that I, I really appreciate the work that's been done by our college president for the, the last year since we approved and granted him another year on the contract. Now, obviously, we have many, many people who work on the executive level, and, and I want to tell you how much that I really appreciate what you do and how you do it, and I think it's all paying off remarkably well here for Weatherford College. We have so many different things that we have accomplished. We have been very, very successful in raising the compensation for our employees here over the last few years, and I think that's very important. We've made great strides. Every time we have a meeting, what we're trying to focus on are, are the different parts of our operation. We had a very good meeting today, and when Mr. Baker and our two, two ladies presented the, the information about all the different things that, that they're doing. I'm not going to get into that today and go through that again. But anyway, this is a question today about the evaluation of the college president. Does anybody want to say anything on, on behalf of, from a standpoint of the board on how you feel like our president has been performing his job? Does anybody want to make those comments? Okay, I don't hear anything. I, I, you know, personally, I am, I think we're lucky to have Dr. Farmer. We've, we've had a, I think we've been very fortunate to have the man and what he brings to the table. So now then I want to talk about the, the extension of his contract. Is there a motion concerning compensation and renewal of his contract for the 2023 year?
I make a motion that we accept his annual evaluation of himself as president of the college, that we renew his contract, and that we give him a 6% increase to his salary.
Is there a second on that?
A second.
Is there any question or comment by the board? All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. Congratulations, Dr. Farmer. Do you have any questions or comments? I, I really would like your comments, so you can point out some of the things that you feel like we've been able to accomplish under your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and Board. It's a great honor and a privilege to serve with the many, many dynamic stakeholders of Weatherford College, our faculty, our staff, our students, all of our stakeholders, our generous donors. Weatherford College is, has always been a great place, and it's becoming even better, and that's not a result of just the president. Everyone knows that. It's our entire team working together to propel this institution forward, and I, you know, from all of the new programs that we've added, the workforce programs, the associates, the bachelor's degrees that are now available at community college prices, not university prices, our beautiful new facilities, our new athletic programs, all of the increases that we've been able to make to our employee salaries and, and take care of such good people that are doing such good work. We still have work to go, but we're certainly moving in the right direction collaboratively, and I will tell you that in addition to all of those good people, it simply would not happen without a dynamic board of trustees that comes together, that don't have agendas or axes to grind, that they have the common goodness of, of this institution, our students in the community that we serve. That's what drives and propels this institution forward. And so I'm honored to serve for this board, to this board, serve alongside of all of my colleagues, my highly respected colleagues, and it has been the greatest professional privilege of my life, and I hope that I am privileged to continue serving for many more years to come.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll move to agenda. Thank you, Dr. Farmer. We'll move to agenda item number 14. Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's an O B.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Well, thank you, Dr.